I want to get everyone's attention. Let's all rise from a moment of silence. And let's remember again, Trooper Mack. This is your role this week, and it's a very emotional time for both families. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
President.
Mr. Gorman.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Petrotchi.
President.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Here.
So before we get started this evening, we have Jim Sell, Dean and Director of the Lower Bucks College Campus, here to introduce a couple people and to say a few words. So Jim, you got the podium.
Thank you, Council President De Giuseppe, Borough Council.
If you go in front of that, it'll pick you up better with the mic.
Yeah. Right here. Council President De Giuseppe, Borough Council, Mayor Saxton, Mr. Dillon, Mr. Salerno, and Bristol Borough residents, it is my honor and pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Felicia Ganther, the President of Bucks County Community College. Originally from Los Angeles, Dr. Ganther holds a Bachelor of Arts and Master of Arts from Northbrook State University, as well as a Juris Doctorate from the University of Illinois. She moved to Arizona in 2012 to serve as Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs for one of the nation's largest, and I might add best, community college systems, Miracopa Community Colleges. In 2019, she earned a PhD in Community Development from Arizona State University. Dr. Ganther has a remarkable record of accomplishments as an educator, administrator, and a strong advocate for students. She has extensive experience in crisis management, student life, academic quality improvement, among others. We at Bucks are very fortunate to have Dr. Ganther's leadership as the college's fifth president. Again, I'm pleased to present to you Dr. Felicia Ganther.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
To the President and to the members of this borough, and to all of you wonderful young folks that are gathered here and your families, I want to say good evening. I am not going to take very long, but I do want to share a couple of things with you. First of all, Bucks County Community College is located in Bucks County. We serve the north, central, and the south. Many people don't know a lot about the college. They see, as they drive down here to get on 295, they'll see the institution there, but they maybe have never been to Newtown or up to Percocie to see our beautiful campuses. But what I will tell you is this, we have over 65,000 students. We serve across the nation and the world in our non-credit programs. We have more than 6,000 students who are attending in academic programs at the three campuses, and we also service high school students through 29 high school dual enrollment programs. And that is bought together by our 42 transfer programs, our 22 occupational programs, and our certificate programs. Now, one of the things that I'd like to tell people is that Bucks has something for everybody. There are thousands of options and opportunities, and I see a lot of family that are in here. We have kids on campus that runs from age five, six years old, all the way up to teenage years in a prep program for college. We have returning adults, we have non-traditional student options, and we have traditional student options. We are affordable and convenient. I'm going to show you a couple of things about why we are affordable. Again, we have three locations to serve you, and we have been voted the number one online college in Pennsylvania. So those are things to be excited about as you are residents of Bucks. We are the best deal in town. Now, I want you to see, there are four columns. The second column shows you annually how much it costs to go to Bucks County and annually how much it costs to go to other institutions. And I'm going to come back to this, but I want you to see that it's about $6,500 a year for a student to go full-time at Bucks County Community College. And that's for our transfer programs, that's for our associate's degrees in occupational, and there are many other programs that are short-term that are much less. Oftentimes, they are free because we get additional funding from grants in order to support people who are interested in entering into the workforce. What folks don't understand is that our institution also has 100 or more transfer agreements. You see all of these signs. I mean, we have some young folks who see some of these and may be familiar with them because they play sports. Well, the wonderful thing is, is that if you go to Bucks, you graduate to Bucks, many of them have guaranteed admission for our students, have dual admissions, which means you are a Buck student and a Temple student, a Buck student and a Penn student, and then transfer scholarships just for our students. I'm going to go back to that one that I just showed you. You see, if you come to us, the difference in how much money you will save, and I'm going to go all the way down to the bottom. You come to us for two years, transfer to Delaware Valley University, we're not only going to save you about $100,000 off the top, but they're also going to grant you a $20,000 scholarship each year because you are a Bucks graduate with an associate's degree. And so these are the things that we want people to be proud about, to know that you can start at Bucks, spend two years with us, or go through one of our short-term certificates, and you can come out and have no debt. That is the most important thing, because I don't know about you, but $180,000, $152,000, $144,000, for many of us who bought homes back in the 80s, this is more than what those homes cost. Okay? So we want people to know that this is an affordable option, and that your son or your daughter, your husband, your wife, your friends, your loved ones are going to get a quality education with us. We partner with a lot of folks. We have over 70 manufacturing companies in the region that we work with. We do very specific training and certifications for them. We get people into jobs. You come to us, six weeks, eight weeks, you're in a job. Ample facilities and space for community groups. We do lots of training of new professionals for our local hospitals and our healthcare industry. Just Friday night, Jim can attest to it, two students that were talking to me, one of them, I got him a job on the spot that evening, right? We are serious about making sure that students, that individuals who are interested in a better life and a better way, that Bucks County has their back, and that Bucks County is going to deliver on that. We have a strong alumni and donor network. Listen, we have raised a substantial amount of money for scholarships. Here's the thing, we want to make sure that we are helping students in need, students in crisis, but as important, students who think that college is not an option for them because they can't afford it. And we want to make sure that they understand that if they come to us, we're going to help them get through. Finally, employment services. We work very closely with the Workforce Development Board, Career Link, and we have our own career services where we bring employers to our institution to share with students what it's going to take for them to get into the local workforce, and we do an opposite thing. We have individual corporations and companies who come to us and say, "We need CDL drivers." I'm going to show you this, "We need CDL drivers." Okay, we're going to start a CDL program to make sure that those people get certifications that they need. Now, I can't take all of the credit for this because this is before me, but we are excited. If you drove down 413, you will see that a new building is on its way. Center for Advanced Technologies has 28,000 square feet. It is a beautiful building that we are putting in career and occupational programs, and the exciting thing is that it's going to have spaces where we can move things around in order to fit the type of occupational program that we are going to put in there. Again, we had some companies come to us and say, "We need CDL drivers, and we don't have a way to get them trained." If you come on the Epstein campus and you see these orange dividers, we'll be taking a portion of our parking lot and turn it into a CDL license training program, and almost every single person that goes through this program, Career Link provides the funding for them to complete the program, and then we have employers waiting for them to get their license so that they can get into the jobs. Now, Epstein Campus is very involved in the borough. They're involved not only with community engagement, but also with the school district and the academic oversight committee, and as important, we have an in-school youth program with the various high schools and students who have stepped out of high school but need a GED. And so those are the things I cannot take credit for because we have two great individuals who are representative of this area, and that is Carol Ferguson, that all of you affectionately know here in the borough. Let's give her a round of applause. Carol is one of my bosses, and so I have to make sure, I've got to take care of my boss, and then my dean, Jim, who, you know, every time I talk about Lower Bucks. Let me close out. These are the themes for this year. As you all know, I'm new to the game here. This is my 10th month, and we have been moving very aggressively to do some things. First of all, enrollment, our enrollment is low. It's 50% of where it was in 2010. So we've lost 50% of our student body over the course of the last 10 years. Our goal is to get back to 2019 enrollment, and we hope to do that efficiently and effectively in the next couple of years. The second thing which I'm concerned about is I want to make sure that every single student has a post-secondary credential. That means it's something that they can earn a living with that no one can take away from them. And so my job is to be reaching out to the high schools to see, who are the students in your high school graduating class that are not college-bound? And how can we help them to be successful? The next is that we're just going to be improving. We're going to make sure we're affordable. What I want you to know is this year, we are not raising tuition. Tuition should stay the same because I want to make sure that students who have already figured out how to afford college can continue to do so in this next year. We're also working on workforce development and finding companies and corporations. We have a wonderful partnership. We're starting with Estee Lauder and supply management and supply chain. That's going to be an automatic, student starts with us, finishes, boom, in a $70,000 job. So we're excited about these things that we're doing. Finally, culture of care. We know that, hey, I don't know about anybody else in here, but I'm exhausted. COVID has exhausted me. Pandemic has almost laid me out. But I know that I'm not the only one that's experiencing this. Our students and their families are experiencing it. And so we are working with United Way, the Opportunity Council for Bucks, as well as the county of Bucks, to make sure that we have supplied basic needs, student mental health and suicide prevention, as well as a food pantry, and any other service that we can provide on our campus. So a student, if they have a crisis they're experiencing, they don't have to go out of the campus because we're bringing all of the services to them on-site. And so my job as a president is simple. I want to realize dreams. Whatever dream a person comes to our campus with saying, "I want to be a doctor, I want to be an athletic trainer, I want to be a welder," whatever that dream is, it's my job as a president to realize those. And so I want to say thank you so much, again, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, our Chair, David Breitinger, and the entire Bucks County Community College staff and faculty, I want to thank you so much for giving me a moment of your time to share what we're doing. Thank you very much.
We have something we would like to present you with.
Dr. Ganther, we want to thank you for coming to our community and obviously creating an energy and a spirit behind Bucks County Community College that our community, as much as any, if not more, is really relying upon. So we have come up with a gift for you here. It is just a plaque of our iconic Bristol waterfront and wharf, and we hope you'll put it in your office and display it proudly. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we usually get into public participation, but I'm going to change that tonight because we know why a lot of parents and children are here. I think we get to discuss what's been on social media. I don't go on social media, but I'm more than aware of what's going on right now. I think that I would say 100% of what's going on is inaccurate, and I would like, I'm glad that you showed up tonight, and I'm glad that the director of that program is here tonight, so that we can really clear the air publicly and let everybody know what's going on in town. So Mr. Pezza is going to start, and then I'm going to say something, and then we want Mr. Chapman to go to that podium so we could discuss everything that he's been telling all the parents and the people on social media.
So I wanted to give a general update on rec. We've been working, we being the council and the mayor, been working with a number of members of council and the school board to continue to update and upgrade the borough rec program and its offerings. One very positive step has been to appoint Mr. Poploski to oversee, promote, organize, and be accountable for the entire program of Bristol Recreation. He is off to a great start with the participation of many kids, especially as it pertains to the Bristol Basketball Rec Program that just ended. Further, St. Mark's and the school district have agreed to a reciprocal agreement where the borough is able to use St. Mark's Gym when available, and St. Mark's is able to use borough facilities also when available. This increases opportunities for our kids involved in official programs. St. Mark carries insurance and requires robust background checks for their coaches. This is the kind of cooperation we need. Further, Stacy Dragon and Little League are ready to get underway on April 9th with the opening day parade, and we've talked to Stacy about our requirement for background checks of her coaches, about ensuring collection and expenditure of funds, and run it through the borough accounting, and also starting to work with Mr. Poploski on scheduling of the fields and facilities. She, as always, has been very positive about the upgrades we are planning to make. Again, this is the kind of positive cooperation that will go a very long way. We continue to eye fields, courts, parks, and programs for upgrades. As for the Wildcats program, which obviously a lot of you are here, and to reiterate what Mr. De Giuseppe said, I'm also glad that you are here. Because a recent article was written by Mr. Bowen, which was brought to our council's attention, and Mr. Bowen treated it fairly as he reported what was reported to him, and I know he's doing his job as a journalist. So I hope that he will also record these comments tonight. Mr. Chris Chapman, who runs the Wildcats football program, has made accusations about school board, council, and the mayor and what our plans are for his program. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to set the record straight. First, Mr. Chapman has built an impressive football program. I and no other member of council have said anything differently about the quality of the football experience for the kids. What we have expressed and still are concerned about are some safety concerns a few months back over the activity of the Wildcats program behind the football field as it pertains to parking, the bike path being blocked, and the overall condition of the field. We, I can speak for Lorraine and myself, as that is our word, were contacted by many residents who had concerns about that. Our job as a borough council and a school board is to ensure that we have taken all the appropriate steps to ensure the safety of our children and parents, and to protect the borough taxpayers from any liability. Mr. Chapman has decided to interpret this as being an attack against him as an individual. We did hope to have a private meeting with him, but this is the forum that Mr. Chapman has chosen. Here are the facts and what we plan to do and why. In order to mitigate the issue over the use of the fields and facilities, our plan is to bring all rec programs possible, including if Mr. Chapman is willing, Mr. Chapman's football program, under the banner of the borough and/or school board. All borough programs will have specific standards in place as follows. Programs that require payment will be required to provide accounting through the borough. The books should be open. Coaches must be cleared by a criminal check and child abuse clearances by the state. Sergeant Morris has provided us with the appropriate outlets for this. Kids should be from the borough if they participate in borough rec programs. We are open to some consideration of nearby municipalities for programs that might not have enough kids to maintain just with borough kids. To accomplish this, programs will provide a complete list of participants as well as their borough address. To be clear, if Mr. Chapman would like to comply with these standards applied to all of our sports programs, he would be welcomed and encouraged to coach this program. The advantage of Mr. Chapman doing this and complying with the rules and becoming part of the borough program would be to not have to pay for the use of the borough or school district facilities. It will keep the costs of your program down. Again, he will run this program if he chooses to, with full background checks for anyone who works with children, full financial accounting through the borough, insurance protection, and a fair, coordinated, and officially scheduling of the field. We have met with a group of school board members, and they plan to adopt the same standards. Our hope is that Mr. Chapman will agree with the above so we can have accountability and the ability to maintain safety measures in regard to parking, conditions of fields, conditions of the path, while also providing a robust program for the kids as you currently have. If, and I want to stress this part, this is important, if Mr. Chapman does not want the support of this council, that is up to him entirely. In that event, we are not telling Mr. Chapman he cannot use any of our fields, and the school board is not either. He will be subject to formal requests that must be made to Mr. Poploski, the borough, and the school board, which every other municipality in this area requires. These facility uses will come along with a fee schedule that Mr. Dillon and the school district are in the process of finalizing. They will also be subject to scheduling by Mr. Poploski. In this scheduling, borough and school district programs will have priorities. Of those two options, join us, and we will be glad to have you, or continue to run your program, and pay your fair share like everyone else does. We are happy to entertain both. Thank you.
So what we're trying to understand is, and Mr. Chapman, if you want to go to the podium, I would appreciate it. What we're trying to understand is that you went to social media saying we were taking the fields away from you, and we're taking your program away from you.
Absolutely.
Where did that come from?
It came from, I did everything he's speaking of. We do this every year. We provide insurance to the school.
Wait a minute, let it back up. Where did it come from?
Where did what come from?
Tell me, who said, "We were taking the fields away from you"?
George Gatto and Chris McHugh.
They said they're taking them away.
I brought the emails with me. They said, "They are seeding the field, chemically treating it, nobody can be on..."
Eating.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Nobody can be on either field.
Okay.
Okay, for what could be up to a year. Now, this was all put in front of us two weeks before we start our flag football season, same season we've always had and never had to file any papers, turn over our financial statements, everything. Remember, for nine years, we have done this. Greg and Lorraine themselves have openly said, "We do not support you, we do not support anything you do."
That is untrue.
No, that is not. You can look at any council meeting.
All right, listen, we're not going to get into he's...
And we don't want to either.
So let me just explain, let me just explain something about the fields.
Sure.
I want to take one thing at a time.
Absolutely.
I want to clear up the misperception and what you're saying because it's totally untrue.
Well, then, I guess the emails that I received are...
Can I finish?
Yes, sir.
The high school said to you, and I talked to Mr. Chicoletti, that they were trying to get the fields ready for September for the football team and for you to use the fields. They tried hydroseeding them, and it didn't work. So now they're trying to put dirt down on the fields, and they're going to seed it, and now's the time to do it because come summer, you're not going to grow grass. So they have a short window to try to get this done. Do you agree it's a mud pit out there?
Actually, that field is in better condition than it's been in, in the last nine years we've been out there. Well, please, let me, let me just, you want to answer...
But they didn't say they were taking the fields away from you.
Well, let's go over this.
I think if you would have went to the school board, and I don't know because I'm only here...
But you don't know. This is why I'm here.
So, but you're here tonight, why are you here with council then?
Well, because you run this recreation board that you put together.
Okay, did the recreation board ever contact you?
No.
Okay.
I know you said on camera many times, "We should reach out to them." Greg drives by me on his bicycle when we're out at that field dozens of times.
We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow.
Never once has anybody stopped and said, "Chris, let's talk about this or that."
We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow. After that meeting, we called Stacy in already because baseball starts this Saturday. We had a meeting with her. She agreed with everything.
We are all very glad to see that baseball is getting some...
Our job is to try to help.
Right.
When you stood at that door last time you were here, what did I say?
You thanked me.
I give you a lot of credit, and thank you...
Yes, you thanked me.
...for running a great program.
And I appreciate that.
So why would any member of this council, I take offense to it.
I take offense to some of these council members.
Want to hear any kid, any kid in this town or outside this town, and take something away from them? Why would we want to do that?
I don't know why, but that's exactly what you're doing.
Clearly, that's what we're doing.
Yes.
Clear. If you're not, we're not. Hold on, guys.
We'll get an opportunity to talk.
I will.
All right? So what we're saying is, the school board wants to get their fields in shape.
Right, I've had...
But it's council's fault.
We've been doing it for the last nine years. What's your issue this year?
Yes, well, let's go over this.
Don't you think, if you were, if I was you, I would go to the school board and say, "I'm starting my flag football program on April 1st. Is there any issue? Do you see anything you need me to tell me?"
You can't flag twice per month.
Right? Did you do that?
Yes, we did.
You did?
Yes, we did.
Okay, well then...
I have, let's go over this. So we run our flag football every year at the same time. We have a great rapport with George Gatto. If we had a problem, we'd reach out to him. If he had a problem, he would reach out to us. Nobody called us and said anything about any seeding or anything. As a matter of fact, the last time myself and Mr. Gatto spoke, he said he didn't even realize that we seed the field. For the last six years, we've seeded it ourselves out of our own pockets. We would scatter that, and he said to me, "Chris, the field's in bad shape." I said, "George, you've been here, I've known you almost my whole life. You were my football coach. We know the condition of this field." When we started there, when the school board allowed us to set up camp back there, one team, 16 kids, to start our program, that field was all dirt. There was no grass. It was dirt, and railroad dirt at that, that does not grow grass.
And this council filled that whole area in.
This council did?
At no expense, yes. We took 100 truckloads of dirt to that site and filled that whole back area.
Okay, well, grass didn't grow on it, it was still a dirt field, and we immediately started spreading seed, year after year after year. So...
So you're saying the school board then has taken the fields away from you?
No, I'm saying the rec group itself, which would be...
The rec group didn't even meet about Chris Chapman yet. You weren't even on the radar.
No, I didn't tell you that right now.
Okay. Well, we did our paperwork, submitted it to the school.
Okay.
For one field, they said no. Then for the next field, they said no again, again stating they're seeding it and chemically treating it, and nobody can be on it for almost up to a year.
So their football team's not going to use it.
That's what I tried to say. So the football team and the track program that has already started and is out there, field hockey is already out there, I mean, the fields are being used. So for us, we can't understand why we can't use the same space we always did. It's not even where the little dirty muddy area is. We're up from that. The area we're in is all grass.
That's something I think you need to discuss with the school.
Well, we have to, of course, we have to go next. But we've had a meeting, like I said, we applied for our stuff the way we're supposed to. I don't know if you know, but when we first went to them, we carried a $2.5 million policy. The school wanted a bigger policy. We doubled that to $5 million. Every year, we submit all of our insurance to the school. We have to. Every one of our coaches has a background check, child abuse clearances. They can't coach us, and they don't. It's a league rule.
Government's...
Right. We follow every guideline, okay? We are a community-based program. All of our sponsors, maybe one or two, come from out of town. Everybody else's business is here in Bristol Borough. Our kids, they're playing there. There's a lot of people saying, "Oh, you have outsiders playing." Sure, we do, but we've never hit it, we've never said we didn't. From the very first meeting you can watch me attend, the first thing one of the school board members said to me was, "Chris, are these borough kids?" I said, "85% are borough kids. The other 15% are relatives, family members that live in the next town over and want to come here because we run a clean program."
Did everybody ever say you didn't?
I don't like, I'm not happy with that.
Listen, I understand, but, you know, for the last, I believe, two or three council meetings, Greg has got in front of the camera and said, "It's not safe out there." He brought up a lot of issues.
It's not safe when there's a football game for the school.
Coach, coach, coach.
I'm either going to ask you to leave, or you're going to have to wait. That's your choice.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you, Coach. And again, I appreciate you guys giving us the time to come here and speak about this.
You can have all the time you want, Chris.
And again, I appreciate that because we are hoping...
I just don't like the fact... I just don't like the fact I've been involved with kids for over fifty years.
Then why haven't you ever wanted to work with our program?
Well, let's think about this. You go on social media, you go on social media...
The only thing I can think about is I ran against you one time. I ran against Lorraine.
You ran against me, that's not why I don't want to work with you.
Huh?
That's not why I don't want to work. You think because you ran against me?
It just...
Chris, come on. You're not serious, audience.
Again, why demand all this stuff from us?
I think the problem is that you constantly badmouth this council on social media.
No, I don't, I, I tell the truth.
You said that we don't want to help.
You call the truth badmouthing, but the truth is the truth.
It's not the truth. What you're saying is the truth.
Ralph, you are in charge of the recreation group, am I correct?
Am I in charge?
Yes, you said yourself in your council meeting, you put it together. So, it's you, Greg, and Lorraine.
Me, Greg, Lorraine, Brian, Betty, and there's four school board members.
Right. So, you guys put it together with council members, with, um, school board members.
Correct.
Right, so you really are the head of it. You're the boss of it. Everybody answers to you there.
Do we take anything away from you?
Well, we don't know yet because we haven't applied for a Borough field yet.
Okay.
Because there's, we feel there's no reason, we have to give you all our financial information from our, what sponsors we choose to...
You're saying that you want, you're saying that you want help from this council in this Borough, correct?
We don't want your financial help.
We asked for nine years. You refuse. Lorraine, Lorraine literally said, "We have the money, but we will not help you." Greg sent me an email saying, "There will be no support for your program."
Can I, can I interject?
Please, sir, I, I didn't interrupt you, let me finish, please. Because you yourself have got in front of the camera many times and said, "It's not safe out there for kids." You said, "We have a problem."
All right, let's not go back and forth, all right?
So, just let me speak, thank you. So, you have also said about a lighting situation, do you know two companies here in Bristol Borough donate light towers to light that up?
So, you're going to say that's lit well enough? You're going to say that?
Do you know what these towers are?
Not a single care has gotten hurt.
Right, I'm sorry.
Listen, I think the point I want to clarify is that's not true.
Mr. President, you know what these machines are and you know how big of an area they light up.
Greg, let him finish and then I'll give you all the time you need.
I've been there twenty-five times.
I'm sorry, guys. Guys, guys, guys. Uh, Mr. President, you're involved in construction, you know what these machines are. These machines, they're four giant lights and they light up a tremendous area. They, you can see them all day long on ninety-five when they do work at night. Right, one lights up an area that would be the field. We have two. We have two. Parking...
Why do you turn on your car lights then?
Well, you're talking about nine years ago. You're talking about nine years ago.
We're not going to get anything done, let him finish.
But you're talking about nine years ago, but you're right. Because one of the companies, one of the companies actually, actually gave us the machine. They said, "We're not gonna, we're not gonna let you use it all the time. We are now donating it to you so you have permanent lighting there." Just so you understand that part. You also stated that we have that path blocked up, which is untrue. Our parents know where they have to sit. They have to stay behind that black path and that's where they all set up, every one of them. The parents look out for each other. The only time kids are coming out of practice and opening...
I think we're missing the point why we're here tonight. The point we're here tonight for is you made statements...
Yes.
That we were shutting down your program.
Yes, your recreation program was taken off.
And we were taking your program off of you. And so far, I haven't heard anything to, any truth to that statement.
I didn't say you were taking it off of me. You can't take it off of me.
We want to run your program.
You want, what you want to do is your recreation program, you probably specifically because you are the boss, they all talk to you.
Well, I think we all work very well together, but...
I, hey, listen, I think it's great that you guys are finally investing in recreation. I noticed they started...
But you want, so what you're saying is you want no help from this Borough.
Well, you've never helped us in nine years.
Okay, but now that we...
We gave up asking years ago.
Now that we want to get together and start working...
No, you want our information, you want us, you want everything.
You're in good information.
What did you say is, is...
You didn't listen.
No, I listened.
You're saying that you don't want to...
You want all that. It's, it's not for you.
So, then you don't want help. You don't want to turn over your financial records.
No, we don't want to turn over any records to you guys.
You don't want the kids maybe to play free instead of the parents?
Oh, the kids do play free. We have a grant.
They'll all play free.
Kids can play year-round for free for us now.
That's good.
Right.
So, who's paying? Why are some people paying?
Why are some, this is for flag, if you don't qualify for this grant...
Oh, football, your football program.
It's only for the families that don't qualify.
Okay.
So, anybody that doesn't make enough money or has any assistance from the state of somehow, you qualify for that grant and you can play four sports through us year-round for free.
Okay, so...
So, the ones that pay, and if you notice, they pay a very reduced rate. The ones that do pay, uh, flag football costs them sixty dollars, tackle football costs them twenty-five dollars.
That it was free, flag football?
If, again, if you qualify for the grant.
Okay, so what we're saying is if we wanted to help finance that program where maybe some of these kids don't pay anything, you don't want our help?
Well, what I'm saying is we've asked you for help for nine years.
Okay, well, we're offering help, so...
And, and I appreciate it now, but it, it's a little late.
So, you're saying no, that's all I want to know.
No, not at all. Actually, I'm here tonight hoping that we can, that we can fix this situation once and for all.
Well, we're not going to fix it the way you said, you handled it.
The way I handled it?
The way you should have handled it was, you should have contacted the Borough and said, "I'd like to come in and sit down with your recreation board."
Actually, what we did was we contacted...
Instead of going on social media and saying things that weren't true.
Ralph, we never had to contact yous for anything as, when it came to sports. Yous weren't interested, did not care what we were doing down there.
We helped every program in this town.
I understand you are now and I appreciate that.
Not now, we've been doing it since I've been here. We did basketball, we do soccer, we helped with baseball.
Right, it's this year, this year.
The, no, not this year. I'll show you checks from the last twenty years I've been here.
And you have basketball?
We have, uh, you have...
You had basketball one year that two guys tried to run, they had a little bit of a season and that was it.
Okay, then Kobe...
We came in to the school and ran basketball for two years. Then, we got back out of basketball to focus on our football and not be in anybody's way. So, we added basketball this past season. What we did was we reached out to Mike Poploski and said, "We understand yous are starting a basketball program. We don't want to overlap in any way in case our kids want to play both." Because we encourage our kids to play Little League, to try soccer if you want. If they don't want to, they don't want to.
But you, you advertise things under Bristol Borough Basketball or Bristol Borough This.
We are Bristol Borough Basketball.
We are Bristol Borough Recreation.
Right, you are, you just became it when.
No, you...
No, 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 right, right. You became Bristol, we are Bristol Wildcats Athletic Association.
Where do you want it? I want to give Mr. Pezza an opportunity to answer you.
Absolutely.
But I also want to bring this to a head because I don't know if a lot of people want to speak.
Yes, other people absolutely want to speak.
I mean, I don't know how you want to handle this, but...
Well, Ralph, I think we could probably, we can probably get this squared away quickly and easily. The field that we use, we want to continue to use.
Not my decision.
Right, I understand, but you are the head of this recreation committee.
It doesn't matter, recreation.
Ralph, if you, if you look into that camera and say, have a meeting with your little recreation group and you tell them...
We're meeting tomorrow.
Okay, that's great.
That was before you planned this.
Okay, that is great, but how am I supposed to know that? Nobody contacted me.
We weren't invited. We were going to speak tomorrow.
It was your second, it was my friend that said...
They're all against us, but we're not invited.
About you.
Right, you want us, you want to help us, but again, we're not invited to any meeting.
Meeting tomorrow was scheduled before this. Why don't you leave?
Gladly, everyone else, you know what to say, just pick up for it. We want to go lightly.
Come on, guys, come on, come on.
You got kids in a room.
Let's get through this, let's be professional.
You got kids in a room, you should act professional.
But you can, I'm sure you can understand how people feel because, again, we've been doing this for a while now. You do realize our, uh, football team won the championship last year at the high school?
That's right.
Right. Did you see the amount of people that were there? This was, that was broadcasted live on TV. I mean, I mean, listen, there's coaches from other football programs that have reached out to us.
Chris, nobody said you're doing a bad job.
No, we're not talking about the job. We're talking about, all you have to do is say to your rec board, "Why do we have to bother them? Let them have their season."
I'm not saying anything, the rec board didn't make the decision. You're saying that George Gatto emailed...
The school board who made the decision sits on the rec board.
But why control the school board?
Yes.
I do.
No, you control the three guys that sit on that rec board. You are the boss of that recreation board. If you simply said, "Guys, what is the problem letting their program operate there? We're the only ones that have used that part of the field forever."
Okay.
Like, we don't cut the grass there, but we offered to at one time. I don't know if you know that. We didn't ask to play on that fancy high school football field. John Chick, uh, D'Angelo, offered that to us years ago, said, "Yous are all taxpayers. That field is yours to use. Apply for it, use it." We applied, we submitted the insurance, no problem.
Well, then he should be supporting you at their meeting.
He should be. He sits on the rec board, correct?
He sits on the board.
Right, so if you said to him...
I'll talk to him tomorrow about it.
Right, if you said to him, "Let them guys use the spot they've always used. Nobody else uses it. We're not anywhere by this dirt spot that they're claiming has to be fixed."
I don't know what has to get done. All I know is they're trying to...
I'm sure you do. I mean, I'm sure you know everything that's going on there. This is why we, you know, you say, "We can work together," but really, we can't because you make it almost impossible.
I don't.
Well, I mean, Greg's on the board and he's constantly knocking our program. He's, he's getting in front of the camera and showboating and saying there's all these safety words.
All right, that's enough, let him break talk.
Yeah, I mean, so this, this is indicative of the, part of the issue, Chris. I've said it one time. You said, you act like I say it all the time. I said it once, one time.
You made it pretty clear two meetings.
And I expressed...
Really, once is enough.
And I expressed, just let me finish.
Sure.
I let you finish, you let me finish.
Absolutely.
I said one time that I had some safety concerns that are minor on the relative scale and I said, "You do a great job." You, excuse me, let me finish.
No, no, go ahead.
You do not ever address that part of it, the fact that we've all said, "You do a great job." Instead, you want this fight. We don't want this fight, we think you're doing a good job. But we are council members that have a responsibility to our constituents as well. There are liability issues that we must be clear on.
We carry a $50,000 insurance policy.
And so, let me finish.
What liabilities do you have?
I let you finish, let me finish. And the shame of it is, the shame of it is, is that no one wants to see kids wrapped up in a thing like this, which is why, and again, let me finish, if you were listening to what I said, what I said was, "We would love for you guys, the Bristol Wildcats, to be part of the rec program and all you have to do, all you have to do is continue to do exactly what you're doing, just stay on the same standards that the rest, like Little League, are dealing with." And if you don't want to do that, that is fine, but everyone has to pay janitors, everyone has to pay people to clean up, so there will be a minimum fee schedule like every other municipality, like Bristol Township that I have right here. Everybody does it. So, we're not coming after you, we're not saying any of the things that you're saying. None of those, none of them. And for some of you, that's true, your taxpayers pay those dollars, not all of you, not all of you.
You're right.
And that's also true.
You're right, we have forty kids from outside.
And we're really, we're not saying you can't have those kids at all. We're saying we'd be willing to make considerations for that. So, you said you're here to solve problems, so am I. Let's solve this problem. Instead of just throwing bombs, what's the solution? We have a solution. Your only solution is to say, "Let us use fields that are being heated."
We have a solution that you made without anyone putting from us.
Because this is the Borough Rec Program. That's what we're talking about. That's our job.
Right.
You have an independent organization that you are running well. You've got a job to do. You're advocating for it very well and I compliment you and everyone in here on that because it's a good program. We have a job to do. Our job is to protect the taxpayers and to protect our own liability.
Absolutely.
And to make sure that kids are protected and safe.
Absolutely.
No one has ever said anything...
We've been doing that for nine years strong.
I agree and I appreciate it and the only time any one of us spouts off of you is after you've said a hundred different things about us that aren't true. So, yes, does it get under our skin every once in a while? It does.
Everything I say is true.
But when you go out there and fire away, and fire away, and fire away about things that aren't true, yes, human beings are gonna get frustrated. But we don't do things to kids because of that. What we do, what we do, I'm not, excuse me, I'm talking. What we do is to protect this borough and protect kids. We want you to be part of it. So be part of the solution. That's all I have to say.
Do you want to finish, or do you want him to talk? Cause he seems like he wants to talk.
Now, I, I know a lot of them want to talk.
You want to talk? You want to go to the podium? Can you state your name for the record?
John, 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 one second. We started a petition, okay, just a few days ago. Eight hundred and seventy-nine people wanna, wanna help us, back us, and don't want to see us go anywhere.
Back you for what? They, we're confused about.
Support it.
Back you for what?
One second, one second. Using the same field we've always used, staying in the same place we've always used, not joining up with your rec board all of a sudden.
That's fine. I am glad that you.
Because you've never wanted us in nine years. So now, don't you want us to?
Apply for the field.
I'm not telling you to join up.
You're not listening. We did twice.
And you don't, you don't get them all the time. Sometimes it doesn't work out.
In other words, if we don't join in, you.
That's not true. There is something called a schedule. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Why don't you have to apply the same way other people do?
We do apply.
Okay, and if you don't get it, it doesn't work out all the time.
Oh.
That's the whole idea of a schedule.
You're right. The last nine years was no problem. The last nine years was no problem.
So be part of the solution. Be part of the solution. Don't just fire bombs. Be part of the solution.
I think, I, I think you answered everybody's question tonight. You want to be on your own, you want to be left alone, and you want to continue what you were doing on your own. And whatever, whatever comes down.
We have no way alo- alone. We just don't want to be linked to your recreation program because
That's fine.
we can't get equal cooperation. I've, we've done, wait a minute, we've done.
How do you know?
I'm explaining to you. When we started our basketball program, we reached out to Mike Popilowski, who you say is the president or is in charge of it. He told us, he gave us a date, they were starting their basketball program. We held off on starting our program. Then, your program ran for one weekend and it stopped. So we go ahead and started our basketball program. Then we get a contact saying, excuse me, they only get a contact saying, "Oh, we're starting our program now a little bit later." But we were already a month into our basketball program. So we keep trying to work with everybody. We have the schedule for Little League, so our kids that are playing Little League, we schedule stuff for R N M so they can come and still play football. I mean, I don't know, you say work with yous, but we've tried to work with yous from day one.
That's fine. I think you answered council's question tonight.
Oh, I'm sure I did, but I just wanted to clear up some things because Councilman Pezza wants to say it's unsafe there, and we blocked the path.
I think that, now, listen, let me just say.
And he also said about the traffic. Ralph, what we have done was, we don't allow anybody to park along that strip now. Everybody has to park along that fence.
Now, now, good, that's a good thing. And that's all I was saying. That's a good thing.
He asked us, he never ever said it was a problem, Greg.
Alright, let me just say one thing. I don't want to.
Things are problems on camera, the showboat, but you never came to me.
Alright, Chris.
I don't want to put.
You could stop your bicycle and say, "Chad, can I talk to you?"
You're gonna do, and there's nothing we can do other than walk with you.
Press, let me just say, I just want to end this.
Where are you, Ralph?
I want, I don't want to get our acting chief in charge in trouble, but please tell Mr. Chapman how many calls the police department gets about what's going on.
We get numerous calls up there, and I'll tell you what the calls are. And I, I went up there last year, looked for myself, got out of the car and tried to help straighten it out. Some of the problems are the parking across the street, the parking up on the grass, the parking on top of the, um, walk path where people are trying to walk through, and they have to walk around the cars or the.
You'd have to show me that picture, I'm sorry. Because we do not park there. We don't let anybody.
Press, would you let him finish?
Well, no, I can't sit here and listen to things. It ain't true.
Please.
Hold on. Go ahead.
Ice cream truck up there, kids running around. I couldn't, I couldn't even drive down Trenton Avenue from Garfield Street to Harrison Street. I walked from Garfield Street down to Harrison Street, spoke to as many people as I could and explained the safety issue. And then I walked back along the path and had people move their cars and their chairs that were set up on the blacktop on the path so that the people on the bikes, the people walking, their dogs, and the people walking can have access to the blacktop on the path.
State your name for the record and address.
Lauren Kilgore. Um, I know what they're talking about with the parking.
Can you state your address, please?
Three forty Cleveland Street.
Three forty.
Um, Brittany and myself walked around to all the neighbors the other day, asking them, um, about their complaints and things like that, and parking was one of them. So what we had planned on doing was just having everybody line their cars up properly on the high school side so that nobody's parked in the grass. That way, you can't, kids don't have to run in between cars. That way, there's just, you know, no really chance of anything bad happening.
So you agree there were issues. But you agree there were issues.
I agree the parking was a bit much trying to get your car through there, especially as fast as some of the people drive down that street, which is not good.
That's what we're trying to say.
But a simple solution is to just park everybody on one side or drop off. A lot of the kids, because they live local, can ride their scooter there or walk there. So that's an easy fix.
Brittany, that's the problem. We're trying to work with the program. Work with the program. Nobody's trying to hurt this program in any way. The problem is, Mr. Chapman took it on himself to blow this whole thing out of proportion. But that's, that's his call.
So then we can have the field?
I can authorize them fields. I don't, the school district owns them fields. These aren't borough fields. If you said to me, you wanted to talk about Otter Street Field or Little League Fields, they're our fields. But the school district, and I think, from what I understand, and I could be wrong because I'm only hearing secondhand information, they're trying to make that complex back there a lot better for September. And if they don't do it in the next couple of weeks, they're gonna miss the season for planting grass. I think Mr. Chicoletti was very clear with that, that nobody wants to hurt this program.
But if we don't have the field, it hurts the program.
Well, then, don't you think we should, don't you think this planning should have taken place prior to?
I think that if you're gonna seed a field, you should probably do it before a season starts, or not right before a season starts, maybe after. I mean, I'm no landscaper, but you can plant grass in September.
I can't speak for them.
Well, we just want to know if we have a field to play on.
Can't authorize the field.
You head the rec board, you can go there and say, "Well, who wants to play?"
Who wants to speak? At the podium, Chris, please, I don't want to have to remove you, so.
Hi, my name is Brittany Dugan. I live at three, three, five Jefferson Ave. Now, all those kids on that field, they're my kids. I watch all these kids stay out of trouble on that field. Because the older kids, some of them are a little sketchy, and we all know what goes on in the areas. We don't need more statistics. We need people to keep these kids on the field to allow them to play these games. Because if we don't, what do you think they're gonna do in their free time? If it's not video games, they're gonna be out in the streets. And they're gonna end up in trouble, which can end them up in jail. Do we want that for our children? Because I don't. And as a taxpayer, I would like to use the field.
Okay.
So who gives me the permission for that?
Not this council.
Well, then, tell me where I can go to get it.
School board owns the field.
So when's that meeting?
I have no idea.
You gotta know something. Thursday night, what time?
Seven P M.
Seven P M, thank you. So, and that's an open thing? Anybody can show up today? So who's going with me to that? So I guess we'll be seeing you again because my kids are playing these games.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my other question. I did some homework today. Who owns that field? Is it the school or is it Amtrak?
Well, I would say if you want to push the issue with Amtrak, you'll never.
I already got some phone calls in there.
You'll never be able to play on that field because Dolph shut it down.
Um, not so fast. I happen to know plenty of people over at Amtrak, and they're all about a youth organization.
Well, then, that may be.
So, if that's the case, that's the route I'll be, and I will be at your school board meeting on Thursday at seven, and you'll get to hear me again.
Good luck.
I don't need luck.
I just have one, one simple question.
Does anybody else want to go to the podium?
Go.
Go state your name for the record, please.
I just have one simple question for you, though, because really, again, we can put this to bed tonight. If you, Mr. Pezza and Ms. Cohen, who sit on that board, simply agree that it's okay for us to play there, we should be able to play there. I don't think the school board is gonna go against you three. I think they're going to say, "Or yourself." I mean, you have the contract to cut the grass there now, correct?
I had it before I was here.
Well, you got it last year, what I'm saying.
I thought about that. Well, we're, no one ever said that you couldn't use the field. They said you come on the Borough Recreation Program and they run.
But we don't want to be.
Listen, listen, they said you come on the Borough Recreation Program and, and they run it, or you stay by yourself, you put, and, and if you come on the Borough Rec, you, your priority, right? Because you're Borough Recreation. You get, you get your field. If you don't go on the Borough Recreation, you put in for the permit to get the field. No one ever said you couldn't use the field.
Yes, they did. George Galloway and Chris McQ both said. We did. We put in for both fields back there. They were both denied. They won't give us the denial on paper. Buddy sent me an email and said, "Look for a different venue." Both fields, they gave us the same excuse. They're seeded, gonna be chemically treated. You won't be able to be on there. Track is on the one. Have you applied for a Borough Field?
Hi, guys, can we get, so we can hear what's going on?
Anybody else?
Chris, she said you have one thing.
Yes, simply, like I said, Ralph, we could put this matter to bed. I mean, you are the boss. You are in charge. You're, you're in charge of it.
I don't control the school board, and I don't control this council.
I didn't say.
On one vote.
I'm, right, and I'm simply stating, if you, Lorraine and Greg, simply stated at your meeting tomorrow.
Brian and Betty is on the board.
I'm sorry, Brian and Betty too. I did not know. Um, if you simply said, "We don't see a problem with them playing there. They've been there nine years. They handled everything. We went and got our own trash cans. We seeded it for ourselves. We have no problem cleaning up." And again, we don't have to play on the high school field, which is what I believe Dave Chicoletti said was costing the taxpayers money. We're okay with staying on that little dirt field that we're on, line it ourself. This way, no janitor is getting paid overtime to open bathrooms for us. We keep it real simple. We don't want to put any burden on the taxpayer.
Alright, alright.
Chris, just a question. Um, or maybe the council couldn't answer this. You're stating that you don't want to use the field for the, uh, the Borough Field. You're, you're happy just using a, the side field.
Yes, we are very happy where we are.
Okay. Wouldn't that also be a liability to?
But we're fully insured.
If something was to happen?
They have insurance. They're running insurance.
I mean, you've probably seen your grandson, he played football for us, correct?
It has nothing, my reason has nothing to do with what.
No, but I mean, I'm sure he's been out there to see him.
So let me get some other people.
I appreciate your time, and again, Mr. President, you can solve, you can solve this whole thing in a matter of minutes.
Okay. Who wants to speak next? State your name and everything for the record. Go ahead.
My name's Kayce Kilgore, and I live at three forty Cleveland Street, Bristol, PA. Um, what did he ever do to you? Give us a field?
Alright, next.
Hello, um, my name is, uh, Rio Pritzko. I do not live in Bristol Borough.
You live.
I live in Levittown.
Can you state your address for the record?
Sixty-four Howard Road, Highland Park. Okay, I s-
At Middletown?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, ten years ago, Chris approached me and we started this program. We started with fifteen kids. They were fourteen through fifteen years old. We started, I, I can tell you personally about that field out there. When we found out, we were offered to use the high school field for practice and play. We didn't want to use it for practice because we didn't want to tear it up. Because they're older kids, we didn't want to tear it up. So we used the backfield. That backfield at that time had no bit of grass, nothing. I went out there with my personal equipment, seeded the field, with a shovel, took out every boulder that was in that field, including the high school kids were also practicing. So we're talking about safety issues about this field. The high school kids use that field on Friday nights. They have the same issues with parking. So if this has been an issue for years, and you say the school district owns that field, but I think it's really Amtrak that owns it, why didn't you build a parking lot out of that when it was just a dirt field?
What do we need a parking lot for?
You just said, the parking is an issue.
Parking's an issue for this program.
An issue, period. One high school, but high school gets more people out there from the schools and everything.
That's who's parking all the blacktops.
Press, you gotta stop. You gotta let these guys talk.
I'm sorry, I, I just get a little excited. I'm not, I'm not angry or anything like that. But when we started this program, I, and what I see what's going on now, you saw in the beginning there was fifteen kids, maybe this program won't last. Well, we grew to two teams the next year, and now we have three hundred and fifty kids. And Greg, I'm sorry, I don't know you personally or anything, but in your message earlier, "Join the rec program."
But you don't have to.
You don't, you don't have to, but that's a threat. That's a threat from where I come from. That's a threat. Everything you said.
Alright, you're right, you're right, you don't.
I'm sorry, i- if we can't get along, NISAC, we're part of the NISAC League. Uh, I'll tell you this upfront, when it comes to Pop Warner, NISAC, Keystone, A Y F F, they're not gonna want to be, they won't let another team in. They like to deal with organizations like us. We're out here for the kids. It's not for glory. We built this for the kids. I came in, I own a semi-professional football team in the area, an adult football team. I'm very well-known in the football area. I used to play for the Ben Sam Ramblers. I'm very well-respected. We wanted to build a program that's gonna help the kids with their future. Allowed, like I do with my semi-pro team, I took kids who couldn't get into college and got them a shot at the pros. I, I don't see the issue. Alls I see is, and I'm sorry to say this, I hate to say this, you see dollar signs. You see dollar signs.
Where do you see dollar signs?
You see dollar signs. You want to take over this program and you want to charge every player.
You're saying the opposite of what you said.
No, 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 you, you're saying the opposite of what you said.
What we said is the complete opposite of what you're saying.
I heard exactly what you said.
Didn't, because you're not saying it accurately. So like, when we get up here and we're talking about being accurate, this is definitely part of the problem. Ninety percent of what you're saying right there about us taking it over a threat, I gave you two options, both of which are totally up to you, none of which would destroy your program. And when you talk about a threat, it's ridiculous. And on top of that, we said we would make it free, like you guys already partially are, which is great. We said we would still make it available to kids outside the town if that's what you needed to succeed. You're just not listening. I feel like you guys are really passionate, which again, is great. I don't think you are actually listening to what we're saying. We're trying to help.
Who pays for the fees?
Who pays for what fees?
Who pays for fees?
The taxpayers. That's what rec is.
I can tell you this, when I first helped start the program. I can tell you this, when I first started the program, my semi-pro team paid thousands of dollars to even get the program started.
Congratulations.
That's great. Listen, let me just say something. We started.
This is not a semi-pro league.
I never said it was a semi-pro league.
All our programs that we started over the last year or so is free to Bristol Borough children.
And that's great.
That's what we're trying to do. So now that we want to try to help, we're being criticized. As far as I'm concerned, Mr. Chapman answered this question over an hour ago. He wants to be independent, and that's what he's gonna be.
Well, we are independent, and.
That's good, that's good.
We've always been independent. When we wanted help nine years ago, where were you guys? We asked for equipment?
Don't forget.
We asked, you didn't want nothing to do with it because you thought we were gonna fall.
I think the problem now, the problem is, Mr.
You started the program on one team, right? You used that field for that one team. The next year, you grew, two teams, you still use that same field. Did you pay?
No.
Alright, so.
Our taxes pay that field.
Listen. Taxes are paying the field, but like, you're not paying at all.
Our taxes.
Well, this is where I'm coming to.
Everybody taxes, everyone taxes.
It comes to, this is what I'm saying, sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, Chris, uh, sorry.
I can get somebody else to speak, just a second.
No, I just, I just got one more thing. I, I'm happy that you guys want to support us now, but like I said, we, we tried nine years ago.
Okay.
And one last thing I have to say, you're talking about the safety issues with the field in the back and stuff. You know insurance companies come out and look at that stuff. They look at the lights, they look at everything. We want to get insurance if it wasn't safe.
Thank you. Who's next? State your name and all for the record.
My name is Louis Reyes. Address, five twenty-five Montier Road in Glenside, Pennsylvania.
Glenside?
Yes, I'm not from the borough. So, probably no.
Montgomery County?
Montgomery County. So probably not many people know me here because I'm not even close to the borough. For me to get here, I gotta drive thirty-five hours, thirty-five minutes on the turnpike, pay tolls, or I could just come the local route and take fifty minutes to get here. That's how it normally works for me. So I'm sure a lot of you guys don't know me. Where did I come from, real quick? Um, a coworker introduced me to Chris four years ago because I had interest, um, in, um, you know, coaching football. I love football, that's the reality. And, um, as soon as I met Chris, a stranger, by the way, guys, um, I have not, I didn't even live in Pennsylvania until twenty seventeen. I grew up in New York City. So I moved to Pennsylvania and I meet Chris. The first thing that I do when I meet Chris, the first thing that Chris does when he meets me is, number one, if you have any interest in coaching, you have to get all your clearances done. He got all my clearances done immediately, right? Number two, Chris vetted me, checked me out. He didn't even throw me right in the fire with anybody because nobody knew me. I was an assistant my first year. And then when people started to know me, they started to see what I was capable of and that I was a trustworthy person. Now, this is not about me. The reason why I bring this up is because I drive thirty-five to forty minutes every single day after work to come here to practice, to be with these kids. Not for me. I don't get paid for this. I make very good money on my own, by the way. So I don't need to do this for the money. I do this for the kids. The only reason I drive that long every single day, the only reason I drive up here on a Saturday morning, thirty-five minutes, to pick up kids, right? Because parents can't drop them off again, to then drive them twenty minutes to an away game, to then bring them back, to then drive back to Montgomery County. I do it out of problem. I do it for the kids. And I do it not just for the kids, I'll be honest with you guys, I do it for Chris. Because I see the work that Chris puts in with this program and with these kids. I see the impact that this program has on these kids. And not just that, I see the impact that I currently still have with half the football team of the high school, Bristol Borough High School team, because I've coached them and I've continued relationships and mentorships with a lot of these kids. And I do it because of Chris. I don't feel like reporting to a Bristol Borough rec league because I don't know you guys. I know Chris. And I understand that you guys gave options, completely understood, but the writing is on the wall. Option number one, join the rec program, you get everything you want. Number two, do everything through what you have to, but it's gonna get denied. We're getting stonewalled already because we're doing it on our own through the other part. And don't tell me that it's not true because we don't have a permit. So that's the situation. You are a hundred percent right. We do have two options. Taking option number two means we lose the program and the rec league gets the program. That's option number two. And I understand that my voice probably doesn't mean a lot because I'm not a taxpayer in Bristol Borough, but honestly, I don't care. All the kids' parents that I coach are taxpayers of Bristol Borough, and I do this for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Chefsick. I live at six, nine, five Second Ave. Sorry, I'm very nervous. Not a public speaker at all.
Alright.
Um, I'm gonna be honest. Council meetings, I don't watch them. I never do. I live in the borough. I don't watch school board meetings, nothing. But if a friend tells me to watch them, I do. Um, up until an article was posted where I got both sides of the story, I, you know, kind of sided with Chris, but then I got both sides. And then I gathered a lot of information just listening to everybody. You know, I heard about the rec program. I've seen the advertisements for the rec program. But the rec program from the advertisements and what I've seen and from parents that have joined their kids up for the rec program was more just a teaching thing. There was no games, there was no anything. With this, they get the games, they get the experience, they get more than just the fundamentals. Sorry, I'm still shaking. Um, when I first, I'll start with my seventeen-year-old son. He plays for the high school football team. Honestly, if it wasn't for Chris's program, he wouldn't have been able to get out the anger that he got out on the football field. He wouldn't have fell in love with a sport that he loves so much. He played baseball. I'm friends with Stacy. My kids all grow up here. My oldest son went and played with Danny. I know the, the sports teams in the families that are in the borough. But what Chris offered was more than just my immediate family. It was an entire family. Like, I would have never have known any of these people and much more if it hadn't been for this program. They're a part of my family. They've taken, they've watched my kids when I can't. They've picked my kids up when I can't. They've taken them to games when I can't, when I'm working. At one point, I was a single mom, and I didn't have the ability or even finances to do some of the things, you know, two parents can do for. some of the things, you know, two parents can do for their kids that are working. And these people were there for me, and I couldn't be ever more grateful for that. I don't know entirely, you know, why there's such this big struggle between council, school board council, Chris, whatever it may be, but I wanted to give it to you from a parent's perspective, not any board person's perspective, and what this organization and what they've done for my family. My kids have made friends that'll last a lifetime, I've made friends that'll last a life, hell, I've made family through these people, some of my best friends, people that I talk to every single day through these organizations. And to rip that away and say, and I understand your concerns, that's the other thing I wanted to say, I understand your concern with safety, yes, parking, they did address it, they're addressing it now. But as far as safety is concerned, I don't feel any safer than having my kids there, because there are million adults that I know, know, that I can trust my kids with, instead of letting my kids run around on the streets and getting in trouble, letting my kids, not even knowing what my kids are doing, so.
I just think that this whole thing was unnecessary. I think that Mr. Chapman came in tonight to say that we were taking away his program and we're taking the fields away, and none of that is further from the truth.
Yeah.
There, if the high school has a plan in place, whether they should have notified him in advance, nobody's saying he can't maybe do this program in May instead of April, but nobody's saying that you can't use these fields for a year or more, and that was your statement.
Yes, that's my statement from George Gatto, I mean, I, I believe in that, but I'm not-
I'm not calling you a liar either, but I could tell you right now, the school board and this council would never do anything to jeopardize any program in Bristol Borough, we would only wanna work with these people. The reason this council, and I could speak for myself, doesn't wanna work with Mr. Chapman cuz he never knows when to stop talking about people on Facebook, and he constantly bangs this council, including myself. It doesn't bother me, because I don't feel, I don't feel that's a threat to me, like he says, oh, I, you're mad cuz I ran against you, that's, that's so far from the truth. I think Mr. Chapman's problem is, he wants to run this great program, and it's great, but his problem also is he wants to play politics on top of that. At the end of every speech, it's always, well, I wanna run again, and I wanna come after Greg, or I wanna come after Lorraine, and I'm gonna come after-
Somebody after anybody.
To me, that's, that's not the way you handle things, but you know what, that's his problem. Chris, you could run every, you could run every election, nobody's against you. You know what I'm saying, you're the one that's making this an issue, you're saying we're against you, so you understand where I'm coming from.
I, I absolutely do, I can, I can be a very compassionate person, I absolutely can, I have kids, I have to be compassionate.
And you did very good.
Thank you, I do have one other question, hold on, I do have one other question, my son is only, my children have only been on that field since 2017, um, so I can't speak to, for years prior, however, and maybe you don't have these direct answers, but I'm fairly certain that one of you, if not a couple of you, might be able to find out why it's taken all these years to even say anything, like, all those years, they never seeded, or there was nothing ever-
I can't answer that question.
I'm not asking you to personally ask it, answer it, but maybe because you all are some type of board member, or you're all interlinked, or you all communicate, whatever it is, if there can be some sort of communication to maybe tell us why, after all these years, all of a sudden, we're not able to use the field, even just as a parent, I'm not on Chris's board-
From what I understand-
I'm not on any of that, I'm just a parent.
They wanted to put topsoil down on the field, and they wanted to seed it, hydroseed it, not just throw seed.
Yeah, I understand.
So the grass would grow, so come September, they have a nice lawn out there for practice.
Now, I can honestly speak for the high schools, I can't say exactly when the high school team's gonna practice out there, I'm not the coach, but I know that during the summer months, as soon as school lets out, maybe even before then, they're on those fields practicing, so-
I don't know.
If the fields are, and I understand you may not know, hold on, I understand you may not know, but why can't one or some of you, because I, like I said, I know you guys, all talk at some point, you all have to know each other, find out why? Why is, why is this all of a sudden an issue? Why is the fields just now needing to be seeded? Why are you saying the fields can't be used till August or September, when we all know that the high school teams are gonna be out there? Why is parking an issue when the high school football teams, both home and away games, are parked on the grass, on the walkway, in the streets, behind it, I've seen it, because I have to walk to the games, because I refuse to park my car back there, because of how many cars, you have the buses. So all these things are a rising issue when it comes to this program, but it's not a rising issue when it comes to anything else. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
How are you, Mr. De Zepi? My name is Sarah Gaunt, I live at 326 Dorance Street, uh, my son-
Give your name and-
6 Dorance Street.
Your name.
Do I give her your name and your-
Sarah Gaunt, G-A-U-N-T. Um, my son started in this organization nine years ago, he's twenty years old, he followed through all the way up until high school, was a great influence for him. That's aside from the point, I'm pretty sure everybody here tonight, and Sam said it well, we want a solution, and you as the president, can you help us get in contact with the school board, or whoever we need to talk to, and get this figured out? It's not about us, it's about the kids, we have all these kids ready to go, we're in limbo right now. We, I, I'm sure Chris wants to do anything to see these kids play.
Well, I could tell you is-
As in, not only the council, but also the rec.
I could tell you is, there's a meeting tomorrow at four o'clock, I'll discuss it with the school board members, I'll give Mr. Chicoletti a call, and see if there's any possibility they can move this program somewhere. Where it could be moved, but I know-
And we were being offered by four other communities outside of the borough to go there, but we don't wanna take it away from the borough, the kids walk to these programs.
That's fine.
If you could make sure that they get back in contact with us, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely, we'll get a number before you leave.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Hey, my name is Brandy Lynn Lee, I live at 219 Cleveland Street. Um, I was a part of the basketball group program with Mr. Chapman, and football last year, we just moved in about a year ago. Uh, my son Isaiah is eleven, sports are his life, um, if he's not playing sports, unfortunately, he's on a video game, I do not want that, so, you know, we try to stay active, if you were in my household, you would hear how much he's asked me, when can we have practice, when does practice start, when does football start, when does football start? Um, I'm pretty overprotective, you know, I don't let my son out of my sight for the most part, we actually live up the street from that field, so just now, I'm giving him some freedom to go up the street, as long as he's with the neighbors and they hang out, they play on that field all the time, he's playing football even when there is no football. I'm really not sure how anybody would keep the youth off of a field, I'm just kind of perplexed by that. Um, I don't see why, I don't know everything, I don't know why there's this big thing in between everybody, how something so positive can turn negative. Um, sports to me was everything growing up, to a lot of my friends, kept them out of trouble, my family, you know, scholarships to college, um, I can't, again, see why anybody would wanna keep that from the youth. These kids love playing, I'm one of the coaches, I have a team, you know, they're all messaging me, when are we gonna practice? It would be a shame to have to tell all of them, we don't have a field to play at, um, because people don't want you to play. I would really like some more information on, you know, I'm just trying to understand, Mr. Pezza, when you say, we, he would have to apply, so who makes the decision, what would be the deciding factors, are you basically saying, already, we're not gonna be able to get the field because of this grass situation, or?
I have, I have no control, or neither does Mr. De Zepi, over that specific situation, that I understand why you guys are passionate about it right now, with that situation, we have no control over that situation specifically. Uh, what we are saying, and we've been working on and just have not really, uh, we had to do it publicly tonight because of the accusations that were being thrown out there, is that we would love for you guys to be part of the rec program, but it seems like that's not in the cards, which is fine, and then if that is not in the cards, then the only other thing that would have to happen is that there will be one schedule, minimal fees for all borough fields and school district fields, Mike Poploski will be the guy that's on top, and we go with the schedule for it. I, as I just- I don't, I don't know what was asked.
John, I think I can say the other thing.
Yeah.
I, it's hard to answer your question when people are screaming, so I, I don't know if I answered your question or not, but if you have-
So, I mean, it sounds like you're saying, you know, there'd be fees, but yes, we would have the field, or is it still in limbo, whether or not, is it not guaranteed?
That's not our field, I cannot speak to it, that's not a decision that I would make, more than this, this board would make, I don't know.
What are the deciding factors, I mean, is it a personal thing, or?
There are two entities here, and we do agree in the overall spirit of everything that we're trying to accomplish, the two entities are the school board, which we are not, and this council. We are in charge of technically what are called the borough fields, so those are mostly the baseball fields, there's a field down near, um, Otter Street that is also a borough field, you know, the basket, the outdoor basketball courts, those are borough, that's borough fields. School district has their property, they own properties. What we have all agreed is that there's a lot of kids in town, a lot of people in town that are doing really good stuff, but our schedule is a mess, there's people everywhere at different times in different places, and that everyone agreed, we just need to bring it together, and we need to bring it together for kids, and what we need is one clearing house of a schedule, this particular instance does not have to do with that schedule, this has to do with the seeding of the field, that is not our decision. So all we're saying, and that's what I, and I appreciate your question, because the passions are running high, obviously, all we are saying is if you want to remain independent, we are going to do what every other municipality does, we're gonna keep a schedule, we're gonna go to Mr. Poploski and say, hey, is the field available? Yes, it is, probably worthwhile to get it on that schedule early, and here's the fee, fifty bucks or whatever it is for that field, that's what we're saying, if you wanna be independent, be independent, but be part of the schedule, that's it.
But we did all that, and for this-
Particular instance, you know?
But we went to Mike Poploski, like you're saying, we went to him, he refers us to the school.
Chris, why don't you let her finish, then you could go back to the program.
But as I was also trying to get to, again, with all of this stuff being thrown out there, I'm getting the horse ahead of the cart, we did not get a chance to finalize all this tomorrow, because this is happening tonight, so we wanted to give you the information, but tomorrow we have a rec meeting, there was, like, this is official tomorrow when we meet with everyone and put it in paper, but we wanted to explain to you what the process is gonna be in the future. This specific instance is not part of what we're saying here, this is a seeding issue, I, I, you know, I can't speak much more about that, I, I don't-
So, for the crazy thing that they're just gonna see when we need to play, I mean, would we at least be able to count on you guys for some support, or to help find us another field, I mean, are you guys gonna be willing to work with us, or?
Of course we're willing to work with you, I do not know the schedule, I do not know, you know, I don't know the schedule for it, I don't know what fields are available, I don't think anyone up here does, I don't know, but of course we'd be willing to work-
I just think we feel like, I don't know, like somebody has it out for us, either Mr. Chapman or us, and we're not gonna have any opportunity to have a field.
Probably feel that way, because it's been said over and over again, not by any of us, but by Mr. Chapman, who thinks we have it out for him, we don't, we admire the program, I don't know how many more times we can say it, so you probably feel like someone's out to get you, because you've been told that, and that is not the case.
Right, I would hope that you guys could show us and prove to us that you are behind us, and that our kids can play, starting this week, somewhere, that would be great.
I can just tell you that I think this meeting was very positive in a sense that I think a lot of people understand this program, and what's going on, and where this line's gonna be drawn in the sand, and I think everybody understands that council is not in any way, shape, or form trying to shut down any program, or take any fields away from anybody. I think if we were taking the fields or the school board, they would say, Chris, you can't use the fields anymore, you're done, your program's done, go find somewhere else to play. Nobody ever said that, and nobody said that tonight, the only thing I heard was that Mr. Gatto said that they're gonna try to get the fields in shape for this, for the fall, it's the only thing I heard, Mr. Chapman elected to run with this, now, two other things that I want him to go back, are you finished?
I don't have any-
I want Mr. Chapman to go back to the podium.
Okay, thank you.
Just finish one thing, two things, one, Mr. Chapman, why did you leave Bristol Township?
I, I won a national championship, oh, I'm gonna look it up for this one. I left Bristol Township because I won the national title, you can look, look at all the records, I won with my team, I won the national title, that's across the United States, with a small group of kids, went down there and competed with every state you can think of, one hundred and seventy-eight teams, we came home with the national title. I said to myself, I want the same thing for my town, I want my kids here to be able to experience that.
So why did you leave Bristol Township? Did you want to bring that experience here?
Absolutely. You should know, because when I first came here, Leo Polinski was a councilman, I talked to him, he met with you, you said, no!
Can I ask you a question? Did they ask you for fees and things, or did you play free for everything?
We pay, we pay the one-time fee every year.
Okay, you used our facilities?
Absolutely.
So every game was free, everything you did was free?
Well, no, no, we pay for our own referees. We pay for our own referees, but we pay a one-time fee, fifty dollars to play on the township field.
And that, that's changed since then.
Excuse me?
That has changed dramatically.
Well, of course it has, that dirt field ain't there anymore, we didn't play on a fancy field, we played on the same kinda dirt field as this.
Now, it's a serious fee, so, now they charge a lot of money to play.
I'm not sure what they charge, I know-
Every township, if you're not, see, I think Mr. Pezza was trying to get at something, nobody wants to hear him, and that's fine, I think with, every township and municipality has in their rec thing, if you are not sanctioned under that township or borough-
Right.
-there's a fee, that's all they're saying, none of that, who knows what the county's gonna pay?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, is, is, you're paying a company to cut the grass there, now, we should pay on top of that too?
They cut their own grass.
Who cuts their own grass?
They have somebody that comes in and the school-
The school does.
Right.
Yes, so then why are we paying too? Cuz we're taxpayers, so we're paying for that, now we're paying for it twice?
Are you a taxpayer?
Am I a taxpayer?
No, I'm asking you.
Absolutely, I am.
So your tax dollars pay to cut the grass?
Absolutely.
Okay, so?
They pay for a lot of stuff in town, Spurline Park is a public park, correct? Correct? Right, so your ordinances do not supersede state laws, correct? I mean, your lawyer should know that.
You got, you're, that's fine.
I'm just asking.
I have no idea.
You don't know if, uh, municipality ordinance that you pass would supersede a state law? I'm just asking.
No, I have no idea.
Alright, um, I'm sure your solicitor could fill you in on it.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else?
So, thank you, I appreciate, I, I appreciate your time.
I, I just wanna, I, I wanna mention something here, and I'm, I'm a councilman, but I'm not on the rec board, and I hear, it sounds like you meet all the requirements of what we're asking for, except you don't wanna give out your financial information.
We don't give out any information, we built our program, you guys built your program.
Okay, well, that's a problem for, for the council, and-
You're using support us, you-
I, I, will you let me finish, I'm, I'm trying to explain something to, to everyone here, cuz I don't think they understand, we have required, we have things that we're under scrutiny for. One, if some kid gets attacked by a coach in anything, that's why they, that's why the state requires all these-
That's why we have-
And you have it, and you said you have it, we're also responsible for fiscal, we're fiscally responsible, which means the finances, something goes wrong, we have to explain what we've done, or what-
We've never done anything there.
Pardon?
We've involved any way to save our program there.
If you joined our rec program, you might have been able to use our soccer field, when that field didn't come available, now you said- Wait a minute, wait a minute, you keep talking about nine years ago, I've been on council for almost eight years, I've met you twice here, once you held a door for me, I didn't even know who you were, I knew Chris Chapman, but you held a door and you came up and you spoke there, and that's when you were gonna run for council, tonight's the second time. You've never been here before council, asking for anything for your program, we have never turned you down at a council, so I don't wanna hear all the people out here- So I don't wanna hear all the people out here.
The word that we work out in, I went directly to them two council people.
That's not how, you're saying the council turns you down. We haven't done it in eight years. You haven't asked for anything in eight years. So I think the people out there should know that you haven't asked us.
Well, ask them now.
Well, then come up with the fiscal responsibility, and you can have it. Well, you give it to us, and that's all you have to do.
Do you what?
Do you, do you put a tax return out?
We?
Yeah.
We have to.
Okay.
We're a 501(c)(3).
Okay, so you have it, so why can't you?
You're not allowed to be in the league if you weren't.
Why don't you wanna give that information, why don't you give that information to the borough?
Does anybody else in the room wanna speak?
I just wanna say one thing, because I gotta go to work real quick.
We don't ask you for your stuff.
Chris, hang on. Uh, Mr. Pez, sorry if I say your name wrong, because I don't really know you very well. Mr. Pez, uh, what would be the benefits of us joining the rec program?
The benefits would be that there would no, be no fees, there would be, um, accountability for the entire program from a borough taxpayer's perspective. Uh, you'd probably draw a bigger base of kids, too, because now you can continue with your, uh, you know, what you need to continue your program running from the township, but also you get a lot more Bristol kids involved. Uh, there's a lot of advantages. In fact, you'd get on the schedule and you would get priority, because as I'm sure you understand, as a borough who runs a rec program and as a school district that runs a rec program, I am positive you understand that those programs would get priority to independent programs, which I would imagine every taxpayer would expect. So that's one advantage. But again, I mean, clearly, that is not in the cards for you guys. You're making the decision to not do that. And, and again, I, I, I'm not saying you, uh, that I know what's right or wrong for your organization.
I don't understand that.
What I am saying is, what we will be requiring is peanuts. This is much ado about almost nothing, and it is just back to the idea that Mr. Chapman just wants to fire at us. That's what he wants to do.
Peanuts.
That's what he continues to do. No, I mean peanuts as in, this is not a lot of requirements, at all. And it's what every other municipality does.
But if, if we were to join the rec program, this is what we're not getting solved here. If we were to join a rec program, would you build a field for us?
Build a field?
I'm gonna build a field.
I can tell you right now.
So why would we wanna join something if you don't, will you buy equipment for us?
I mean, when it comes to how much money is put into that program, we would do what we do for every other.
I can tell you right now, equipment is worth, is more than building a field.
Are you building a field right now?
I can tell you, equipment is worth than building a field.
Are you about to build a field somewhere? Where are you building your field?
I never says it. Would you build one?
What's the difference? You're gonna build a field?
If you let us, we will. We have the money, too.
This is breaking news, if you're about to build a field.
Yeah.
We will, let us.
Here, let me just tell you something. If you, you run a business, I don't know what you do, you said.
Yeah, I have, I have a bunch of businesses.
What I'm saying is sometimes you got fifty people that work for you, then you got a hundred people, and you gotta move out of the building because the building's too small, and you move somewhere else. I think what Mr. Chapman is doing, such a good job right now, he may have outgrown this area. So therefore, when you said you have three hundred kids, you got cars, maybe, I don't know, but all I'm saying is, it's something, there are things you sit down and you talk about. You don't handle it like this. If you're saying you wanna build a field, I don't know, there's no.
No, I asked if you would build us a field.
We will never.
If I'm part of the rec program.
No, that's definitely, we wouldn't.
Because it costs money, right?
We can get ground up near Roman Haws, and we can build all the fields you want, if you could raise the money. So there's a lot of options, but that's when you work together with people. You don't do it this way. You come in and work.
No, 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 I was just answering a simple question. Now, Chris will tell you, I, I get very excited. Uh, I'm an emotional coach.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't mean any hard feelings or anything like that.
Thank you.
I understand your job's hard. All I asked was a simple question.
And we still have a meeting.
About, would you build us a field? Because we don't wanna put no burden on the high school students.
Where would you want us to build a field?
I don't know.
Okay. There's nowhere to build a field. Except out near Roman Haws somewhere, and we would have to.
But I'm asking the benefits of joining the rec program. You're saying the kids won't have to pay. We already have that.
You had it for some.
Oh, the kids' turn.
I, I think somebody else wants to talk behind.
But, hang on, before I leave.
Come on.
I just gotta say one thing. When I, when we started the team, those fifteen kids.
Right.
Hundred percent of them went to college, because I'm the type of coach, I do, I speak to them. I was a player, and you can look my name up. Two thousand and six, I was one of the top recruits, but I couldn't get into college. I preached to the kids all the time, use football as a tool to help you get a scholarship. Don't look at it as a career.
All right.
Because if you look at it as a career, ninety percent of you guys aren't gonna make it there. Get into college. My trophy for the kids is to see them get a degree.
And you guys do a good job for the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right. Anybody else wanna speak? Anybody out in the hallway wanna speak? I'm sorry.
Hello, Melanie Elliott, 310 Lincoln Avenue. So the irony of tonight's meeting, we first started off with Bucks County Community College was here tonight, who just actually showcased a commercial building that they essentially built on a swamp on the side of 413. Because Bucks County is welcoming of all the opportunities that they're presenting to lower-class, middle-class families, and anyone essentially. I think that there's a massive misunderstanding between regulation and the emotional dedication that this private organization has. And the timing of the rec board being developed, I think, has caused and triggered the personal feelings of why is this happening? I think that when I called four other municipalities and asked, can they accommodate us with field time, and they were willing to switch schedules and accommodate, we would've had to arrange for transportation to these other municipalities. It, it broke my heart because these, we are borough kids and families that need to be here in the borough, and we should be accommodating the borough families. I think that if, if you could take the time tomorrow at your meeting to make it a priority to try to join forces, because these, this is the borough. It's not outsiders. These are kids walking to this practice. My son is in, is in fifth grade, is an antsy pants, can't sit still. I've been telling his teacher for two weeks, please be patient, flag is starting any minute. This is helpful for these kids to have a sense of community, a sense of belonging, and a purpose. So I, I'm, I'm hopeful that they're, in the future, I understand, I work in a lot of municipalities, I sell real estate in about fifteen counties. There's regulations all over the place. We're new to the game here. It's being perceived as a personal vendetta. There has to, in time, hopefully, come some merge of agendas, and if you guys could at least in the meanwhile, try to find some sort of accommodations that these other municipalities are willing to do, that, I think that that would be really helpful.
I think a lot of these other municipalities aren't dealing with Chris Chapman. But Chris Chapman needs to put, I think he needs to put his differences aside and try to work with this council and school board.
Okay.
That's what I, I think should happen.
What you're saying is, you don't wanna work with us because of Chris. If Chris wasn't, no, you, you just came back to, you just came back to that. It's, it, they won't work with Chris Chapman.
Wanna state your name for the record and address?
I'm Rufus Davis. And a lot of these, when you said about kids, for the borough kids, majority of the kids was here, would come to the borough to play. Why is, uh, parents taking the kids out of the borough, go and play on, play elsewhere? They go play elsewhere.
I took my son out of the program.
There's a lot of parents in the borough that did that. They took them, they took the kids out of the program and went elsewhere.
I told you why.
He took them out for a reason. There's a guy.
Took them out because it wasn't, I felt like the program wasn't safe for my son. Not because of parking, not because of anything else, because we had four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine-year-olds on one team, and my son would get the ball in the backfield.
I only coached seven to eight-year-olds.
I was there last year.
I got a three-year-old that's on the flag, I got a five-year-old that's on the flag, and I had the one that's at the corner.
I was there last year. Let it talk, let it talk. I was there last year, and I coached, not the season that just passed, the season before. And it was just like, it wasn't safe. My son, at the end of the season, he didn't wanna play anymore. He didn't wanna play the game of football, and it hurt me because I grew up playing football, and I know it's an outlet. So to have him do that, I said, you know what, I'm gonna take you to a team where it's just six, seven, eight, they all have their own individual team. That's why I left the program.
But there's three hundred other kids here that do. Where did they go?
I'm not, I'm not saying that. He said that people have.
But it's, it's, but what I'm saying, you're not, you're not the only one.
People have taken out.
You're not the only one.
Taken their kids out of the borough to play.
And people have also.
That's the reason why I took them out.
You're not the only one. It's other, it's other parents took the kids out.
Not because of this council.
No, I'm just saying.
I don't have a problem with anyone.
But when you said, majority, that majority of the kids was from the borough, would come out and what?
All right. You have anything else, sir? All right, is everybody done? Anybody else wanna speak? Anthony, anybody out in the hallway wanna speak? All right, that ends public.
All right, you wanna? You wanna go to the podium?
I'm John Dugan, 335 Jefferson Avenue. I just have one question for you.
What's up?
Michael Poploski's not here tonight in order to answer this, but I have had a conversation with Brian Johnson the other day on the, yeah.
Okay.
It wasn't personal, no nothing. I mean, I came off kinda aggressive, but.
Came up like you wanted to fight.
It wasn't that.
And I was out there playing with kids.
No, it wasn't that. Don't overexaggerate. But for Pez, for Pez, I spoke to Michael Poploski. You're saying that he, you guys don't wanna take no control from Chris. You don't want nothing to do with his organization. You don't wanna take it from him.
No, I don't.
But.
I wouldn't be able to do what he does.
I had a phone conversation with Mike Poploski. I tried to get in text messages so I could show you guys, but he's smarter than that. He called me. He said, he could work with Chris under the same umbrella. He says, but there can only be one chief. What does that mean? If you don't wanna take over his?
It means exactly what I described, and that is, all Chris would have to do is say, hey, Mike, are the fields available? Here's the dates we want. And Mike would say.
That's not how Mike made it.
Yes, or no.
That's where it is.
That's what, you guys keep asking questions, but you don't let me answer. Can I?
I'm listening, I'm listening.
All right, you have, you have the floor.
Yeah. Pez, I'm listening.
Okay, so what that means is that Mike Poploski will be the guy that is organizing all of these borough programs. If he came under rec, he would be much more directly involved with Chris, but if you didn't, then all he, Chris would have to do is say, hey, Mike, here are the fields. We need them for these dates. Are they available? And Mike would say, Mike would say, yes, no, or let me check. That, that's what the chief is. Mike's in charge of the schedule and the organization. It's a very normal, reasonable process, and I, for the life of me, don't understand why that's getting you guys upset. Mike Poploski was just referencing the idea that there does have to be a hierarchy. I bet you would see him maybe once a year, and that was, what's our schedule? The rest would be the same.
I know, I know Poploski personally. I said, when I heard his name brought up, it actually hurt me. I said, 'cause I went to John Girardi. I said, when you guys had the Big Brother, Big Sister program, he was my mentor. He was my big brother. I said, it actually hurt when I heard his name brought up.
Why?
I said, but when he says that, you just made it clear, though. He's the chief, whatever, but you got a question.
I made clear that he would be in charge of the schedule.
Okay.
That's what I made clear.
And that's fine. This meeting for the school board, will Mike be there?
I have no idea.
He's the head of the school.
Is he supposed to be there?
That, that's the school board.
School board, the school board vice president.
So he will be there?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we need to do on Thursday, then.
Is the meeting tomorrow public?
A committee meeting.
Thursday.
I'm gonna do it so quick. I'm gonna get so quick, it's so late.
Say your name and offer it right.
Hi, my name's Rachel Whitley. I live at 634 Bath Street. Um, thank you guys for taking the time to listen to me. I'm sorry, this is my son. I just wanted to say thank you. Earlier today, you said, tomorrow your meeting, you're gonna dress it, you're gonna find us a field. I think that's awesome. Um, secondly, I wanted to ask, is there an outline or a guideline of the rec requirements? I did take notes when you described them, but do you have, like, is it in one of the board meetings of what the requirements are and the goals?
That's part of our goal to meet. As I said, we did not want to get out in front of this tonight because we have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, because it's not, you don't have one yet.
And there was all of this, no, we've had three meetings in which we have an outline, a very clear outline.
I'm sorry, that's not what I meant.
That's ready to be ratified, yet, you guys were here, and so we wanted to make sure you had the information while you were here.
Thank you, perfect.
You're welcome.
So, we're getting the information to join before it's, you have a ratified.
You guys came here, you guys came here with an agenda and a purpose, and we gave you the information that we had at this point in time.
Okay.
We didn't give you information that we don't have.
Okay, that's, that's all I was asking?
Which is what the meeting for tomorrow is.
And that's the meeting for tomorrow's?
Yes.
And is that a public meeting?
No.
Okay, that's, but it'll be published when it's, like, outlined, and the organization on the.
Like everything else that we do, yes.
And then, as an organization, we can apply to be a part of it that way?
Apply to be part of what?
Of the rec program, is what you're saying. Once it's ratified, you can apply that way.
That's gonna be up to your guys' board.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, like, what the process is. I want to make sure that, as an organization, we completely understand what every step looks like.
I think that's a great, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we want to understand what, um, those requirements are, and then, the requirements are listed, will be listed in there as you describe them today, of what it needs to be.
If you want to know exactly, as a matter of fact.
No, I took notes, I totally listed all of them.
No, I'm just saying that, that we've been working, we have a couple outlines of different municipalities that have done it.
Okay.
We should have done this a long time ago.
Okay, perfect, thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you. Alright, so I guess we're done, that's going to end public participation on this item. Okay. Borough, borough public participation, anybody want to speak on anything? Go to the podium and state your name.
How can I leave my contact information?
My name's Jesse Walker, I live at three twenty Brook Street, and I just, one comment back to the, the walking path, and some of the issues that were brought up with that. So, I was just wondering.
Please, shut that door, please.
Where, where the construction's going on on the Delaware River, and they're building all the condos there, that area there, they have construction equipment going up and down the path.
Excuse me one minute. They shut the door.
So, they're going up, they're going up and down the path where they're constructing the condos with, like, front-end loaders and other heavy equipment, and that's, you know, there's safety concerns brought up about things along the path, so it seems really dangerous that they're, you know, using all this equipment, and pedestrians and other people are trying to use the path there, so.
I'm sorry, you gotta start over. Bill, are you going out?
Yeah.
Because I can't hear, so shut that door, please.
You're going away to come in.
So, the path by the condos that they're building on the Delaware River, the walking path, there's, you know, they have heavy equipment going up and down that path to try to construct those condos.
Walking over here?
Yeah, on the Delaware River where, um, over by the Dial Soap Factory and everything, and Seabird. And so, you know, there was talk about safety concerns along the path related to the Wildcats, so just pointing out that they're running heavy.
Driving equipment on the path?
Yep.
To what?
To condos.
To land, no, to landscape?
No, they're, they have front-end, with the fork lifts that lift all the plywood under the roof, and they're driving on the path.
But I know the house is nowhere near the path, there's got to be a pretty good distance before you get out to the path.
Uh, you should take, maybe they're talking about, maybe, I'm talking about the spot where they're, they've been constructing, or the Radcliffe Court, maybe it's called?
Right, that's what it's called.
And they're building, they're building the units, they're probably like twenty feet from the path.
Right.
And so they, they're driving, I mean, go take a look sometime, and walk down that part of the path, but they're taking front-end loaders.
Are there a lot of heavy traffic with people walking there?
Yeah. I mean, I was riding my bike, and people walk there all the time, you know, and they should, I don't know if they have permission to use the path as construction, but.
If you've got to allow people to work, so if that's their only access, I'm just surprised that they're out on the path instead of on the property where they're, they're renovating, because that's a pretty good reach, and I do construction, if I'm twenty feet away from a house, I don't have a piece of equipment that could reach that house twenty feet.
And NUKI is complaining to us.
I sent an email about the dirt on the path, because it was, you know, they're tracking.
The path is getting redone, there's new lights going on the path, there's going to be landscaping on the path, there's, it's all going to be mulched, and that's supposed to be done over the next couple months.
Okay, well, that's, that's great. So, I was just bringing up that safety concern.
No, we appreciate it, we'll look at it.
Do you have anything else?
The thing I wanted to talk about was just the, um, this, the sale of the sewer system in the borough.
Right.
Very, very concerned about that, and I guess, you know, I can go back, and I haven't gone back to try to listen to all the borough council meetings or other public meetings related to it, but, you know, I'm just concerned that it was, uh, you know, a rush, potentially rushed decision to sell something that is such a big, was such a big asset to the borough.
A rushed decision, we've been meeting several months over this. It just was, you can't discuss that kind of business in public, so we did have executive session meetings that were advertised as executive session meetings for council. And then the authority met, and then they, we had a joint executive session meeting. So, nobody rushed to make a decision, and I think our main concern was to protect the taxpayers of the town, and I said this before, there was forty-two hundred people paying sewer, and if we ever had a major catastrophe, that them forty-two hundred people would have to pick up the expense. By selling it, and you sell it when it's in good shape, you don't sell a car when the engine goes, you sell a car when it's, looks shiny and it looks good, and you try to get the best dollar for that vehicle. We did the same thing with the sewer plant. We're taking that headache, which may never happen, off of the taxpayer. And we also wanted to protect the taxpayer, so we did a three-year freeze with the rates. So, for three years, your rates aren't changing, you're paying the same exact thing you ever paid. Now, on year four, it may go down, it may go up, their rate is different than our rate, but we don't know on year four if we would have had the triple rates or whatever. Nobody's got a crystal ball to make that decision. So, I think this council made a right decision, getting as much money as we can and investing that money, and like I said before, we will make a decision at some point to the public how we're going to invest this money, if we're going to take part of it to do some projects in town. So, there's going to be a whole process. They didn't even vote to buy it yet, their meeting is this Thursday, and that's why they wanted our decision, because they needed a week or more to try to get ready for their meeting. So, that was the issue, it wasn't our decision, we could have waited another two or three months. But, they said to us, if you're going to sell the plant, we need something in writing by Monday, or whatever the twenty-eighth was, so they can vote on the seventh.
There, with the, I guess another question I just had with it, is there, like, when they get, you know, if everything happens, we get all this money, like, is there restrictions on how that money's used? Because, and like, the water sale, right there, it's all restricted of, that money for the, our water system is in a special account, and we.
Exactly.
Use the interest, is the same thing going to happen?
That's what I'm saying to you, we're going to set up, we're going to tell the borough residents what we're going to do. Once that money is put into a special account, it only can be changed by referendum, it means that people have to vote to spend, they can spend the interest, but they can't touch the principal. If that's how this council elects to move forward. But again, there'll be meetings where you could come and voice your opinion.
Is the, are, are we gonna have a, like, a say in how that money's, you know, people?
We could, we have public meetings, you could voice your opinion at every meeting.
I guess the one idea that I thought with the money would be great is, you know, that, that money to pay for everyone's sewer bills, and use all the money to give it back to all the people that paid for the bills, so instead of doing projects in town, give it back to the people that pay all their sewer rates, and pay our sewer bills for fifty million dollars worth of time, so that it goes back and it's distributed evenly.
If you, if you understood budgets, that doesn't work that way. Because there's, there's people's, there's salaries, and there's a lot involved with that, so, I'm, I, you know, you need to get a borough budget and look at it and understand it.
Well, just concerned that you're, you know, you're going to pick projects that maybe, you know, you guys want, but maybe it's not what the town, everyone wants in town too, so. It's a lot of money to have all of a sudden, it just seems very tricky. And I guess I'm just concerned if the, you know, down the road, if this, if this, um, new sewer company sells itself to Aqua PA or someone else, then we even lose more, lose, you know, less, there'd be less control of it. And our water system is, you know, they, they raise our rates now all the time, and we have, you know, very little say of that. And they're raising our rates, and it doesn't seem fair, but, you know, so it's.
There's nothing, if it sold to Aqua, there's nothing we can do about it, we're doing the best we can to protect you for the next three years. And I don't think.
Three years, that's not a lot of time.
I don't think we can make that decision as a borough to say, we're not going to raise rates for three years because we have no idea. So, it's the best I can do for you.
Okay. Well, if you could, please keep everyone posted about what you guys are planning.
Watch the meetings, you do watch our meetings, so you'll know what's going on.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that ends public participation.
Brian? Remember that?
No, I'm good.
Louis? Michael?
No.
Betty?
I have, only, only like twenty. No, kidding. Um, Mr. Dillon, light pole two-three-eight, behind Braggins Garage, around the trail. The light is so dim, I don't know if it's an old light, or it just needs a brighter, but it's, is, yeah, I think it's old, and it's too dark back there when people are walking and they're complaining, they're scared. Um, alley on Otter Street, that I, I believe it's been addressed. Yeah, okay.
I'm going to answer a question.
I know.
He's writing the address, I can see it.
Okay, then we have.
Pole two-three-eight behind Braggins.
We just got that, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, now we have an alley.
Fix by six-thirty tomorrow morning.
You've got that, baby. Then we have a garage, no, I'm sorry, then we have a, an alley on Otter Street, I believe Michael brought this up already. But there's trees in the, in the middle of the alley, and it's an alley.
Yeah, we have pictures of it, we're evaluating, you know.
Rip him out.
I'm, I'm for the environment, I like trees.
I like trees too, but not in the middle of an alley where people are complaining, they can't even go down that alley.
We're checking into it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And, um, what?
You're just trying to wake everybody up.
Yeah, because it was like, no, 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 they're like, Betty, what the heck? No, and, um, I loved having so many people here, but I felt like you were beating a dead horse.
Yes.
Because they still don't understand, it doesn't matter how many years you've been doing this program, we want it done correctly, we want to be aware of all the background checks to make sure everybody complies, um, and I don't understand why it had to come out this way. But then, it was Chris Chapman, so, on that note, hopefully we can get something resolved. That's it.
So, I am sorry.
Can you just?
Fine, I'll be quiet.
The only thing I think we should do is, I, I'd like to thank Joe and his, his police department, and Jim and the Public Works for the way they handled the funeral for Trooper.
Oh, yes, 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 thank you.
Wonderful job in, yes, difficult circumstances, and you guys, I take my hat off to you. Thank you.
Yes, and through a tragedy, through a tragedy, the town showing, because there were so many mountain police that made the comment that they see why people want to be here.
No, it was a team effort, between Merle, us, the fire department, the fire chief, the ENTs, it was just a team effort altogether. Yes, they were wonderful.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Dillon, we have just the items that are on the agenda for council
consideration.
Yes.
So, Monday night's meeting is, we're gonna have one item on the agenda, and that's to hire a police chief. So, I'd like to get everything done this evening, so we don't deal with anything. I still have that public participation Monday, hopefully, out of respect, you know, we know we're all hiring Sergeant Morris, but out of respect to him and his family, I hope we don't get another group of people, and if we do, then I may handle it, have public participation at the end. We have to do, and the council can leave, and I'll stay here if we have a group of people to deal with. So, we need to take care of these items on our agenda for this evening, so if somebody wants to start with.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Council meeting amendments of March seventh, two thousand twenty-two, approval of the treasurer's report for February two thousand twenty-two, approval of the police and DJs report for March of two thousand and twenty-two, approval of the Public Works report for March of two thousand and twenty-two, approval of the Hard Report for March of two thousand and twenty-two.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number four on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the ordinance amending Chapter One, Part Eight of the Bristol Borough Code related to police pensions.
I have a second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor? All opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make motion for the approval of Resolution Amendment to Borough Personal Food Schedule and repealing previous food schedule resolutions, nine dash five and two thousand nine dash oh three.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Department, Department Environmental Protection Grant agreement with Bristol Borough for the Stormwater Program, twenty-five percent cost share agreed Creek area by eleven ninety-eight Worth Cedar Street.
Second by Mr. Patterson. Before we vote, Kurt, or Man, do you want to give us any update on that, are you good?
We're up here, we can give an update.
Everybody?
I think Mr. Saxton would like.
No, alright.
You don't care?
Alright, we're good?
Can you give us a brief? Brief update on that.